Good evening, the October meeting of the city Scranton zoning hearing board will now come to order. Will the secretary please take role?
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Chairman?
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or written forty-five days of the hearing. If you are to give testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After being sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait ten days, I'm sorry, thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain the permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during the thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by this zoning board will expire twelve months from the date of said authorization according with section 111i of the zoning ordinance. If you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all condition of said authorization, you must seek an extension. Any remarks from the board? Do you have a testament of the verification of the postings?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let's call it the first case.
Case number one, Joseph Bonacci seeks special exception approval for the change of one non-conforming use to another auto repair facility to micro brewery at 1401 Sanderson Avenue, IL and R2 zones.
Thank you. I want to introduce myself. My name is Bruce Zero, and I represent Mr. Bonacci from Groove Brewing, who wants to purchase Mike's Auto Service Repair down in the Pine Brook session. Mr. Bonacci is going to testify, I'm going to ask him questions, but I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of exactly what Mr. Bonacci's intentions are. Right now, it's a non-conforming use of a service station in Pine Brook, right on Sanderson Avenue. And the parcel that he is under contract purchase, part of it is in a residential zone, part of it is an industrial zone, okay? So, I wanted to just show you or give you an idea, and I'm going to show it to the camera first so you can see where Mike's auto body is in Pine Brook. And one of the requirements in getting a special exception for a non-conforming use is compatibility with the surrounding area. My approach?
Sure.
Okay. And what I wanted to point out to you in the area of this town is in Pine Brook, and here's Sanderson Avenue, here's Glen Street. Glen Street runs right into the Scranton Lays. You can see the industrial nature of this area back here. Here's a field that's used by Scranton Truck. You can see across the street from Mike's service station is residential, and on the side, and three houses next to this field. But the back, you can see the industrial nature of that area of the property. What I think what makes it really compatible with what's going on here is that you have the Scranton Lays projects going on. And also, here's the Lackawanna River with the Heritage Trail. Right now, Mr. Bonacci is currently on North Washington Avenue, crossing the jail, and believe it or not, he gets a lot of customers who are walking the trail somehow end up at his micro brewery on the days that he's open. So I wanted to, you know, pass that to you if you wanted to take a look at that. And a closer, a view, area view of the neighborhood for you as well. Now, Mr. Bonacci, if you would, with Mike taking the podium, he'll swear to you when...
I have to swear, man? Would you please raise your right hand? You sound like you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
Yes.
Please say your first and last name, your address, and spell your last name for the record, please.
Joseph Bonacci, 335 Dorantown Road, Covington Township, PA 18444. Last name B-O-N-A-C-C-I.
Thank you, you can proceed.
Hey, Mr. Bonacci, you are co-owner of Groove Brewing LLC?
Yes.
And you are under a contract of sale with a Michael Phillips who has a auto service repair down on Sanderson Avenue?
Yes.
And under that contract, or so, one of the provisions in that contract is that you have paid a special exception for the type of business that you want to put in there, am I right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Mr. Bonacci, why don't you explain to them briefly the type of business that you're intending to put into the Pine Brook session on Sanderson Avenue?
So, it would be a very similar business to what we have now. It's a small micro brewery, we're currently on...
Could you pull that mic closer to you, closer to us, we can hear you, please?
We want to do something similar to what we have now. It's a micro brewery, we're on North Washington Avenue right now. Basically, we manufacture craft beer, we have a small taproom, we sell it on the weekends to customers. So, looking to do something similar on a slightly bigger scale than what we're doing right now.
Now, during the week, Mr. Bonacci, say from Monday through Wednesday, what type of operation would be going on there?
So, during the week, Monday through Wednesday, very little, maybe myself or my partner checking on things, potentially brewing, but really just the two of us at the most.
Okay. Now, currently, the hours of operation at Mike's Service Auto Repair are 8:00 AM to 6:30 PM every day except weekends?
Correct.
Okay. So, when you put the micro brewery in, what hours of operation would you allow the public to come and sample the beer or buy beer?
So, we're going to continue the hours we have now, which is Friday, 5:00 to 9:00 PM, Saturday, 1:00 to 9:00, and Sunday, 1:00 to 7:00. So, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, at the very most, maybe in the future, if things are going well, maybe at a Thursday night, but that would be the most.
Okay. Now, with regard to traffic in the area, the only traffic during the week while you're maybe brewing beer on a particular day would be just you and your partner?
Correct.
Okay. And what about any tractor-trailer traffic? How many times a year would you have a delivery?
Approximately once a quarter, so four to five times a year, we'd have a delivery of, yeah, tractor-trailer or a bigger box truck.
Okay. And how many barrels of beer do you intend to brew per year?
Three hundred and fifty barrels is our goal. That's the results from brewing once a week.
Now, Mr. Bonacci, I'm going to show you, you took a couple pictures, photographs, of the current operations at Mike's, am I correct?
Yes.
All right. And the operation that's there at Mike's, does it have a storage facility? Or not, does it have a garage that you intend to use for indoor storage?
There's a bigger warehouse section of that building that, yes, we intend to use for storage, so we wouldn't have anything stored outside of the building itself.
Okay, so you would not have any outdoor storage?
Correct.
Okay. And you do plan on remodeling the structure and expanding parking, and the parking area would be in the area that the lot that's in the industrial area?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Mr. Bonacci, the actual footprint of the building is going to remain the same with regard to the building itself where Mike's Auto Service Station exists?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then, the empty lot area that's actually towards the railroad, it goes to railroad tracks, am I right?
Yes.
And you explain on putting parking there for customers that come on your Friday, Saturday, and Sunday operation?
Yeah, that would be our primary parking area in the back of the building there.
Okay. Now, at any time, you don't serve food, do you?
Correct.
Okay. Are there times that you might bring some pizza in for customers to have, something like that?
Right now, we do an occasional food truck, maybe on a Saturday. I don't know how regular that would be, but that would be the extent of it. We don't plan on having a full food service setup.
Is there any odor or emissions that would be a concern to the neighborhood?
I think you'd have a hard time smelling anything from the outside. I mean, even on the inside, if anything, it would be similar to what a bakery would smell like, and that's at most once a week when we're actually brewing.
Okay. But so, and what about any special occasions, would you have occasion to have any loud music?
It would be contained to the inside of the building because we have the space. We really don't do any type of outdoor loud music at this time. If we had a guy or two with a guitar acoustic, it would be indoors.
Is that what you currently do now?
Yeah, we have, I mean, maybe once a month or so, we've had, again, a guy with a guitar or something similar, simple like that.
Well, they have a copy of your footprint, your plans, and I'm going to hold it up for you, Mr. Bonacci. Maybe you could tell exactly what your intentions are with the inside of the property?
All right, well, if you're looking at this more congested section of the building here, this is Sanderson Avenue. So, the goal is to have a brewing operation, obviously, inside the front of the building here, and it really bleeds into the public space. The goal is to kind of marry the two operations together, both the public and the, you know, our operation. That's really contained to this front section of the building. This empty space right here is currently a warehouse storage area. We don't have a present use for it because we just don't need that much space. We would potentially use it for storage in the next couple of years if we expanded, but right now, it's mostly vacant. Then the back section, like we talked about, which is currently an industrial zone space, would be our primary parking area. There are three or four spots right now in the front here that are currently used for parking. We plan to do the same, but it might be more of a, this is your to-go parking-only section, something like that, because we do have a decent amount of to-go orders.
And how many employees are involved at Groove Brewing?
Currently, we only operate with myself and two partners, so really just the three of us running everything. If we were to expand, we would have to hire between one and three employees, whether they're part-time or full-time, but something in that neighborhood.
Okay. Now, Mr. Bonacci, why do you think this is a good fit for the Pine Brook section?
I think Pine Brook is a good representation of a good mix of industrial and residential buildings, and I think we've established ourselves pretty well in the neighborhood already as a local brewery, so we just want to continue that on a little bit bigger of a scale.
Thank you. And I open up for any questions that you would have of myself or Mr. Bonacci?
Mr. Bonacci, just real quick, with the space here and the garage doors, what are your plans for those?
I mean, on a really nice day, maybe the garage doors are open with some barriers so that, you know, we don't have traffic in and out of those garage doors. We'd like to use the man doors for that. Other than that, most of them are glass garage doors, so, you know, when the weather wasn't cooperating, it'd be just a good way to have natural light.
So, would you say if you were to have live music during the summer, and it's a nice day, that those garage doors would be open during that time?
That's very possible, yep. And again, I think our limitations on live music would be, I guess, limited to either an acoustic act or something more mellow. I mean, we operate right now similar to a coffee shop, so I don't, we don't intend to really change that.
Okay, and then just to follow up regarding, you said the front parking roughly about right here, correct? That that would be for to-go orders?
That's the plan. With those three, three or four spots, because it's situated a little bit closer to the door, that might be designated just for a to-go order because, one, it's closer to the door, but also it's not somewhere we'd want to have cars in general. It's kind of congesting that area, it's a corner, it's not somewhere we'd want to predominantly have cars for a long time.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Just a couple of questions. That parking in the back, it'll all be paved?
I'm sorry?
The parking lot in the rear of the building will be paved?
It's not paved now, I mean, our intentions are to, yeah.
Okay. How about lighting on the outside of the building? What kind of plans do you have for lighting?
I mean, at least a couple floodlights in the corners of the building, out towards the parking lot more for safety. Lighting on the front of the building, I mean, maybe some smaller things for safety, but nothing...
Nothing invasive on the neighbors across the street?
No, I mean, just for walking paths, but nothing to illuminate a serving area or anything like that.
No, I believe me on that, but I get a little concerned sometimes when you're close to a residential area like that, that sometimes the lights have a way of getting away, and the people directly across the street or the silo, but, you know, start entertaining that light coming into their home.
Right.
If you do have a problem like that, would you work with the neighbors and make sure that it's taken care of?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
How many people will this fit for seating inside, in bar area?
I mean, we intend to have seating for thirty, twenty-five to thirty at the most. That's, I mean, that would be full capacity.
Are you planning on having any outdoor serving areas?
We don't plan on having any outdoor serving areas. We would like to, I mean, potentially have, I guess, a place to take your dog outside or a small grass area just to get fresh air. There's not too much opportunity for that, but, you know, there's a little space to be creative.
So, right now, the hours of operation would be Friday, Saturday, Sunday? And you, and you said maybe one other person would be in there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, doing the brewing, is that correct?
Right, so maximum two people Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
And Thursday?
And Thursday.
Okay. If we were to approve this, what would the hours look like, say, the business is drumming up and more people are coming? Do you plan on extending those hours?
At the very most, we would extend the hours to a Thursday night, five to nine, just like Friday. There's really no advantage to being open any longer than that. There's just too much of a operation that needs to take place, but, so, to answer your question, adding a Thursday night in a couple years would be the maximum.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else here to give testimony in this case? Please come up.
Dan, well, she's coming up to the podium. How many parking spaces does he need for this operation?
Seven, eight.
Eight.
Please raise your right hand. You sound like you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do.
Please state your first and last name, your address, and spell your last name for the record, please.
My first name is Mari, last name is Guzzi, G-U-Z-Z-Y. I live at 1348 Sanderson Avenue, right across the street from where he would like to put this.
You can proceed.
You're going on about with these times that are coming on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I have video of the traffic that's just there. My issue is, is that I live directly across the street. I have handicap parking. I don't have off-street parking. You want to make the front of that a to-go. People are going to be parking, and I'm going to be told, oh, too bad, you can't park in front of your house? I mean, I'm a taxpayer. I pay for that handicap. I'm concerned about the traffic on the weekends. I already have a DJ that lives on the corner with the noise. You're going to bring a guitar? You're going to open up the garage doors? I have to sit there in the summer? I mean, I just, there's a license, thirty people? Where are you going to park all that? There's no parking. There's nothing over there. The building behind, I mean, you're going to be able to put thirty people on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday?
Did you maybe want to show her that map so you can show her?
I live right across the street, I know exactly where he's talking right on Glen Street, right behind there. There's parking back there. And when Mike Phillips had this business, Mike Phillips never, ever put a car on the city streets when he was fixing them. So you're going to have people coming over and then just parking in front of our houses? And then I'm going to be told that, oh, wait, after nine o'clock, maybe I can move my car? Why do I have to walk a block to park in front of my car? Then we should have permit parking where the homes are on our side of the street. We should be able to get permit parking over there so that people cannot come over there to park. You have the Scranton Prep parents there. There's no parking coming off Sanderson. You have the tractor-trailers coming around that corner on the weekends from the village, from the Scranton Brick. To come around that corner is unbelievable. And now you want to put thirty cars on maybe Thursday, Friday, Saturday, let's have some loud music? This is a residential area. I mean, I live directly across the street, you're bringing up about the lights, what, you know. Come on, there's other places for sale that you can go to. I understand you want your business, and I'm all for it. I love the fact that you're doing that. But you have, you know, the fire pit going up at your other place on Washington Avenue. You have the music outside. You know, you want to start selling floor packs, you have it right here in the article. Let's start selling some floor packs, you're going to have people coming by. You're trying to set up a bar area, oh, maybe we'll have a food truck there. Now we're going to have a food truck. There's people that live across the street. It's a residential area. I mean, Mike was done, closed, done, that was it. You know, cars never came anywhere, I don't know. There's other places for sale, I think, that you can look for. American Janitor, Thomas Street, just went for sale. There you go, get all the DPW. I mean, I understand it and I love it, but you're going to have these doors open, you're going to have people pulling in, we have more traffic. With Green Ridge floods, traffic is brought back up to Sanderson. Everything's all around down by Scranton Lays brought up. It's unbelievable. And you want to add thirty people too? Maybe get a license for some food? I mean, like, you have one bathroom in there, where, if you have a bathroom, I mean, you have a handicap for everybody else to put this business in if you're going to bring everybody in?
That's something that, if this was approved, that the city would, inspectors and everything would follow up on that.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so...
But I mean, that's something that the city would insist on being in place before it was ever given an active permit.
Right, and then like, we're going to have the waste, we're going to have, you know, with the garbage, like you said, and then we're going to have deliveries, I mean, you know, you need to have somebody come over and just sit there with this corner with the traffic, it's just, and you want to add all this here. And then I can't open up my windows? I can't park?
Well, I mean, I'm not testifying by any means, but we've gone through these cases a lot throughout our years on this board and everything. He has to comply with the local control board laws when it comes to music outside and everything. There's an ordinance that they do follow.
Right.
If his music was too loud, you get a hold of the LCB, they will inspect him and they'll find him if it's too loud. They'll give him a warning, and next time they find him. I mean, that's the stuff that's addressed as you go on.
Well, I mean, I just...
He's testifying, he's testifying here today, it's just acoustic guitar. He's not saying anything about amplifiers or anything.
Right.
And I get what you're saying, believe me, I mean, you're close proximity there.
I mean, like, I am directly across the street. I am directly across the street. I mean, there's a building behind Mike there, it's falling down, it says, "Shut, that's falling down." Did they show you that, that was behind the building that was there? I mean, I don't know, I'm just, you know, I'm all for your business, please don't misunderstand me, but find somewhere else. There's more buildings for sale around downtown Scranton and everything else for what you're looking to do that I think you can find. There's a lot of them, I just, with the residents right behind, you don't need all these homes around you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, one of the things I'd like just to add is that Mr. Bonacci is currently a...
Turn it to the microphone, this way they can hear you at home.
Thank you. And all due respect to the neighbors, and I understand the neighbor's concern, but right now, Mr. Bonacci is in a residential area, okay? And he's very respectful of the neighbors and has always been. You're talking about a business in terms of traffic-wise, it's going to be less congestion. It's only open certain hours. This isn't a bar going in there. This is a micro brewery that doesn't have bar hours till 12:00 at night or 1:00 in the morning. His hours are very limited. His primary purpose is to brew beer and to sell it to other establishments. The purpose of having the micro brewery is to allow people to come in, have a tasting, you know, and experience what a micro brewery is all about. He has no issues, there's never been a complaint in the city of Scranton about anything that Groove Brewing is doing right now in a residential area, you know, across from the jail. Now, if I look at the criteria for getting a special exception, if you look at everything, is the use going to be equally or less objectional in external effects compared to the pre-existing non-conforming use? It's an auto service station. I believe that the use that Mr. Bonacci is putting in is equal to, or actually less traffic-wise during the week than that use right now. So we ask for the special exception to be granted.
Anybody else in the audience, Bob, or no? Anyone else that wants to testify? You sound like you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do.
Please state your first and last name, your address, and spell your last name too, for the record, please.
Anessa McGuigan, that's spelled M-C-G-U-I-G-A-N. Address is 410 Putnam Street, Scranton, 18508.
Thank you very much, you can proceed.
I, Mari is my aunt, so I'm consistently over at their home, and we actually have video of the current traffic issues that are being caused there with everyone, the traffic being diverted, things of that nature. If you guys are going to approve this, sorry, excuse me, will something be done about the issue that is already there with the traffic? Will a blinking light be put in? Will crosswalks be put in? Will permit parking for residents be put in? Something to negate the effects?
Are you asking, if it's approved, will that happen?
Yes, will something be put in to negate the effects?
That's beyond our control, that's the city that does that. City council and the administration look into this.
Okay, and then I do have another question then. I know what you guys are saying, it's not a bar, you won't be open late, you're just going to be for quick tastings and pickups. That's actually going to create more traffic because people, instead of being there for three, four hours like you are at a pub, they'll be there for a forty-five minute tasting, out the door, next car comes in, when a hotspot opens up in the parking lot. So I feel that actually has the opposite effect on traffic, that the point they were trying to make. So, that was everything, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dan, before we vote on this, I'm going to add, I would like to add a couple stipulations.
Sure.
If there is any live music, those garage doors are to stay closed? I think the hours that he is telling us, till nine o'clock, we should have that in there, that he will be closed at nine o'clock?
Thursday to Sunday.
Thursday to Sunday.
Yeah, but we can't open it Thursday, so I was just saying that Friday's...
Bam, you don't testify from down there, okay?
We're going to require the back to be paved. Anything else you guys want to add? Anything else you guys wanted to add?
How about lighting? So there's no direct lighting on any neighbors or any neighboring properties, residences, where they project?
I think you testify that, most of the lighting's gonna be down towards the ground, more for pathways than anything. With that, one more thing, Mr. Benacci, if you can go back up here, I have another question for you. Will the lighting remain on after you close, or you're just gonna have maybe security lights, like low-level security lights on after you close?
Just security lighting, low level at the ground, at the doorways.
Okay, so any other lighting used for walking to get in your building, it'll be off at that point there?
Correct.
And that'll be at nine o'clock?
Correct.
And I believe there's security lighting at Mike's auto service center now?
Right.
To a certain extent.
Yeah, I seen him when I was up there.
I mean, technically on the lighting, 511 covers the lighting. 511 of our ordinance covers the lighting, what he can do and what he can't do.
I'd like to add another one, at this time here, there'll be no outdoor seating. Until maybe, once you establish something, you wanna come back before us for a variance for that, if necessary. I mean, you're testifying at this point, you don't have plans for it or anything like that, but I'd like to get that stipulation in there. So, we're looking at a few different stipulations that rattle on, and I don't know if anybody on the board has anything else they wanna put in there. Dan, can you read them back to us, please?
Sure. If there's live music going on, then the garage doors have to stay closed. Hours of operation will not be later than nine PM on any night. The parking lot is to be paved, and there's no outdoor seating. Mr. Benacci, you okay with that?
Yeah. Do we need to add the days that he's gonna be open? Thursday to Sunday?
I don't think we need to add that.
You guys good? I'll make a motion with conditions.
I'll second it.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
By a vote of five to zero, it's been approved. Thank you, good luck, and please work with your neighbors.
Thank you.
On this, thank you.
We will.
Thank you. Mr. Peddettar?
Can you read the exhibits again?
Case number two, 1629 Pittston LLC. Seeks variance to subdivide rear home at 507 Pear Street from the front commercial property at 629 Pittston Avenue and create a substandard lot, R1A zone.
Good evening, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Please state your first and last name, your address, and spell your last name for the record, please.
Matthew Mendola, M-E-N-D-O-L-A, professional land surveyor from Mendola and Associates, 1109 Taylor Avenue, Dunmore, PA.
Thanks, Mr. Mendola, you can proceed.
Good evening all, I'm here before you tonight representing 1629 LLC. We're seeking a zoning variance in separating two existing structures, pre-existing, non-conforming. The one structure is a mixed-use building with two residential apartments, two commercial suites, and the other structure in the rear, address 507 Pear Street, is a single-family dwelling. Looking to separate both structures and provide ample parking for both structures.
What will the size of the lot at the rear house be, once it's separated down?
Well, it's gonna be, come, 2,226.91 square feet. Pre-ordinance, the requirement is 5,000 square feet.
That's pretty much the variance that he's seeking.
Right.
The rest are pre-existing buildings, so you don't have to worry about setbacks or anything like that.
So the variance we offered about a year ago, a year and a half ago, maybe a little bit longer, for the parking lot at the rear of the magistrate's office stays in place? Or is that expired because nothing was done?
Is there intention to put the parking places in as was shown on the previous plan?
Could you provide the previous plan to me?
Well, it's what is shown on your map here.
We're looking to put four proposed parking spaces for the building that abuts...
For the magistrate's office?
Yes, exactly, in the one parking off-street space for the house.
So, since that was roughly about two years ago, and no action was taken on it, do we have to have another variance request for that lot?
I'm gonna say yes, because they've got two commercial spaces and two residences in that front. And I know we granted a variance for four spaces of the past, we'd have to re-grant it to be consistent.
So do you recommend coming back and doing it all in one shot?
Well, I think it is kind of all in one shot here, because he submitted a plot plan showing the subdivision and how many parking spaces are being...
Proposed.
Proposed.
Could we make that a condition of the approval, that the parking spaces are developed as shown on the plan?
Sure, we can do that.
Now, without looking at that, by separating these properties, is it gonna encroach on any of the land that we approved under the original PIN number, where they're all one for entrance and exit out of that parking lot? Are we losing any of that parking lot? You can tell me. You're the surveyor.
Right, right. All I can tell you is, we're looking to propose four parking spaces that don't encroach on any parcel.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, is when you separate these down, you're gonna have a new boundary line separating the front building. So where's that boundary line gonna fall from the existing structure on Pear Street? Between the building, magistrate's office building?
It's gonna be nine points five nine feet from the corner of 507 Pear Street, and I would say twenty-three point seven five feet from the building on Pittston. That's where the line's going.
So...
So, as far as, if we take that as sidelines?
Right.
Okay, side setbacks. There's nine point five nine on one side and two point nine five on the other side, which gets in the twelve feet total between the two sides.
But what is the length, or that grass area that's there? What would the width of that be to allow cars to come in there with an eighteen-foot parking spot? If we're losing nine feet?
You're looking at thirty-three feet space between the house and the...
From the boundary line, not the house, the boundary line that you're creating.
By the way, what you're creating is nine point five nine feet away from...
Okay, so let's go from there to the end of that grass.
Oh, maybe you're asking how much, what the parking area is?
Yeah.
It's forty-one point sixty-one feet.
And it was that big.
From the house, from the front house to the new boundary line. Proposed.
Okay, I see it there now.
Right, eighteen-foot, yeah, depth, parking spots, and a twenty-one-foot aisle.
Okay, that forty-one feet, is that taking it right to the building?
No.
Just the end of that grass area?
It's in the grass area.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That answers my question, I just wanna make sure we weren't shortening that lot, so it'd be harder for cars to get out of there by separating this. Any other questions? Anyone else here to give testimony in this case?
Make a motion.
Second.
Are we putting the condition that the parking is to be provided as...
Well, if I'm not mistaken, if I remember correctly from the testimony for...
Were required for the, with the lease with the magistrate as well, was probably why they came before, was with the parking spots, so I'm sure it still falls into play there. At that time, he looks for six, and this time, we're looking at four? Yeah, well, let's put the condition out, them four spots have to be developed and they have to be paved. And are we good with four spots? I don't think any more can actually fit now.
I don't think, Mr. Mendola could tell us whether he could fit a fifth one in there or not, but doesn't look that way.
What do you think?
Doesn't look that way.
I don't think he can. I think four is the most we could put in there. I wasn't sure how many we approved last time. Right.
I think it was four.
I think it...
Oh, it's a four?
I wanna say it was four, 'cause I don't see how we could have squeezed any more in there.
It's not feasible.
It is not, the four spots be developed.
I'll make a motion with the condition?
I'll second it.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. By a vote of five to zero, it's been approved.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Case number three, Edwin Benitez seeks variance to convert two-family home into four-family home at 1110-12 Prospect Avenue, R1A zone.
I don't see Mr. Benitez here.
We're gonna check the halls, just to be sure.
Well, we'll run to number four and call it one more time after that.
And number four, New World's Holdings LLC seeks variance to install driveway and front setback area at 918 Grandview Street.
Good evening.
Good evening. Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
Yes, I do.
Please state your first and last name, your address, and spell your last name for the record, please.
Ramel Newworlds, that's N-E-W-E-R-L-S, 918 Grandview Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18509.
Okay, if you could pull that microphone a little bit closer to you, with these masks, it's a little hard to hear, so, you can proceed.
Yes, so I actually purchased this property in January of this year, I just moved in in June, and I'm recently a new dad, so there was a handicap grant prior to me purchasing the property, so we were able to remove it in that same space, we are looking to put a driveway, just so that we can eliminate another car space on the street. Also, it's, with that street is on the hill, so it'd be beneficial to be able to put the driveway there, so that, you know, during the weather with the snow, my wife would be able to get into the house pretty easier.
Do you have a tenant on the other side of the house?
Yes, I do.
Where are they gonna park?
On the street, currently, that's what they do now.
If you understand, when you put a driveway in, there has to be a clearance on each side of that driveway.
So, say it again?
If you put a driveway in there, you have to have a clearance on each side of that driveway, there's a line of sight when you're pulling out that driveway, and if your tenant's parked in front of the house next to your driveway, it's illegal.
So, where the, where I plan on putting the driveway, if approved, it'll be on the, in front of the left side, which is the unit that I'm in, so it'll have plenty of space. And there's a property that's next door to mine, that has the similar layout, where they have the driveway on the left side, and the tenant...
What's the measurement from your porch to the sidewalk?
It is around ten feet.
Okay, so your car's gonna be blocking the sidewalk?
No.
The cars are longer than ten feet, though.
It's actually, I'm not, I can show if that's the exact amount.
I'd say that's about it, I looked at it today, that's about, your neighbor, I see what you're talking about, your neighbor's porch is set a lot farther back than your porch.
Yeah.
You don't have that space in front of your house to do it, I'll be, in my view. You only have about ten feet. A parking spot in a grocery store or a place like that is nine by eighteen.
Okay.
And I can tell you, your car's gonna block that sidewalk, which is illegal.
Okay.
I mean, we'll hear the testimony, it's up to the board, I'm just giving you my opinion on it, so...
Is there anybody here?
Is anyone else here to offer testimony? Please come on up. You can step off to the side so they can testify. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Please state your first and last name, spell your last name, and give us your address as well.
Albert Young, Y-O-U-N-G. My address is 1713 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. And for the record, I am here only as president of the Green Ridge Neighborhood Association, not as a neighbor or the alternate to this ward.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Now, we are in a 1A zone area, which I don't think should permit anything like this. To put a driveway in front of that house would ruin the aesthetics of the house, the looks and everything else. You're going to use the driveway as a parking lot, you're gonna lose a parking spot out on the street. It's a rental property, that's not fair to the tenant, to lose any of the parking area that he has, or she. And number four, the water runoff. And if anybody here knows water runoff? I do. And there is no provision for runoff because of being a paved area. The house is on a hill, and the poor people on the lower end will get all of the excess water runoff. In order to get any way around this, he's gonna have to hire an engineer and get other variances and so forth and so on. So, I really feel that there's no reason to put one parking spot in front of a house that doesn't belong. There is one up the street that is similar to what he's asking. But I've lived in Green Ridge for a... But I've lived in Greenwich for 80 years, and I can attest to the reason that the one up the street is, was there. As the gentleman was severely handicapped, and he needed that area to, that type of area, in order to get in and out of his home. I ran the service station at the foot of the hill for a number of years, so I'm very familiar with what is, of what was available at that point. So, again, personal knowledge in the Greenwich area, I think we're not, we should not approve this. Have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
Good evening.
Hi.
Raise your right hand, please. You soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it.
I do.
Please state your first and last name, spell your last name, and then give us your address, please.
Laura Augustini, A-G-O-S-T-I-N-I. I live at 1110 Grandview Street, about two blocks up from the house where he's, that we're talking about today. I'm also vice president of the Greenwich Neighborhood Association.
You can proceed.
I'm concerned about it for a number of reasons. The first, as Mr. Young noted, was the, is the aesthetics of the area. It's very much a residential area. I'm concerned about the possibility of having a car parked there that isn't registered or just kind of sits there. Once it's on your property, there's very little that can be done to keep it from being like a salvage or anything like that. I speak only because the house that Mr. Young is talking about is across the street from me, where there's a parking pad on the, right in front of the house. And there's been a car sitting there for the 18 years that I've owned my home. I'm also concerned that it's a duplex. It's as a rental property, appears to be a rental property. It has been a rental property for a long period of time. And the parking area might make it more appealable. And I don't think that that's the purpose of the variance, is to assist, to rent the house out. As you noted, we're going to be, they would lose two parking spaces on the street there because you would have not only the area of the parking, the driveway, so to speak, but then the setback in the area so that it would be safe to be able to pull out and pull into that driveway. That area is very congested because there are, there are very few driveways along the houses in that area. So most of the people who live there park on the street, and it can get very crowded coming up and down that street. Very often, if you were going up or down, you have to wait for someone else to pass because of the cars parked on either side. Just as a note, this New World's LLC was formed in New York. It's not a local LLC. And so I also have some concerns about an out-of-state landlord.
No, we can't. That's not testimony here. We can't hear that testimony.
That's all that I have.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Collins?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Walsh?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
No. By a vote of five to zero, we deny your request. Thank you.
Motion, adjourned.
One last call for Mr. Benitez.
Go ahead. Make a last call?
I haven't, I know I hadn't spoken to him a while, but I'll carry this case until next month and be in touch with them in the meantime.
Motion, adjourned.